Well, good evening. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Would you please, if you're able, stand and join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I would make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion to approve the agenda passes. First up, we have high school leadership. Philip, come and tell us your update.
I hope it was in the picture.
Good evening.
Aye.
I like your t-shirt.
Thank you. So I'll start off by introducing myself because it's been quite a while since I've been here. So my name is Philip Angelo. So I'm one of the five E-Board members for Lake Orion Leadership. So what we have to update you with this quarter is we have our third-term events. These are some of the bigger events we're putting on this quarter. And this starts off with our regional conference, which took place on Valentine's Day, actually. So I'll skip over to that. So this conference is a MASC conference. So we have the Scott Alley, who is one of the leaders of the whole leadership program, instant council program throughout the state. He comes in, he helps us run the regionals. We get schools from all around the state to come in and take part in this. And we did this with avoiding mostly Oakland County schools because a lot of Oakland County schools do run the regionals. So we had schools that were from hours away. So it made it a lot more fun. And our theme for this was superheroes. So they spent the whole school day out there at a hotel couple, I think it's about 30 minutes away, to give this whole conference. And it was put on by a group of seniors and some juniors. Following this, we have our Strive for a Safer Drive. This is a campaign we put on every year. We get a donation from Ford for $1,000 and we get to market a campaign for safer driving. So this year, what we're doing is a fast drive could be your last drive. So far, we've been having different activities at the school. Like yesterday, we had a virtual reality setting at our lunch table. And even Mr. Burden, one of our associate principals, came and take part in this. So a lot of videos of him doing the virtual reality got out around social media and a lot of people enjoyed that. So that's something they've been working on. And with this campaign, it's been going pretty well. Soon, they're bringing out some stickers. They're giving out dum-dums to different students. And they're going to do a survey as to see what students believe with this fast drive could be your last drive campaign. Following that, we have our charity week, which is coming up next week. We're kicking this off on Friday with our Special Olympics basketball game. This year, we're doing Leader Dogs for the Blind. We've started off raising money for this through our Mr. L.O. program, which is where students run to be the Mr. and Mrs. L.O., which is just a way to raise what they do is different things. Such as a student yesterday was having people donate to his cause by getting to draw on him. So a dollar, they could draw anywhere on his body and for $10, they could draw on his forehead. So he was going around the whole school like that for a day and he raised over $100 doing this. So that's our charity for this year. Following this, we have Tees and Tiaras. This is an event we recently got back from the dance team. What we're doing is we're having different girls from elementary schools come in to our commons and we'll be having an activity just for them to hang out, do crafts, do different princess things to get them going. We have students that are going to come in dressed up as princesses and we're going to have a prince charming there so we can get it all going for them. That way, the little girls are able to enjoy their time. Just like we have Boys Night Out, we have an event for Tees and Tiaras, just for the girls as well. This right here is our Special Olympics basketball game, one of every student's favorite things of the year. That right there is Mark, one of our favorite athletes, really nice guy. He was actually, we just had the game at Oxford and Mark played a lot and he was very clutch and he helped us win. So I'm a big fan of Mark personally, since I helped coach the Special Olympics basketball team. And with that, the game's taking place Friday. So we're going to have a miracle minute during that and we're also going to have the teachers come out in halftime and do the bubble soccer to raise money. Right now, teachers have been raising money and Mr. McLaughlin's leading the way with this. Mr. McLaughlin is one of everybody's favorite teachers. With that, we have about 40 different athletes on the team. We have signs that are going to be up for them so they can take those home with them. And this game will take place Friday and we've been selling these shirts for them to raise money for that. And so this is what the shirt looks like.
Awesome.
Oh, that is nice.
There's still some left if you guys would like some.
How much are they?
I think there are 15 for the students, but I think there'd be less for you guys. Because that's what we did with the whole issue.
No, you charge us more to make more money.
It's all going to charity.
Mrs. Murmel would like to pay 20.
Philip, what time does the game start?
The game starts at nine. So it'll be during the school day and it'll go between second hour. The reason we chose second hour is just so we can get the full lunch going on throughout the day. And it goes on for the full second hour. And we are doing a miracle minute in between third and fourth quarter. And recently, we had our eighth grade leadership interviews. This is a photo taken from Walden. There was over 130 students that applied to join our Lead Nine program next year. So with that, we had so many that we had to accept because of how many good options there were that will have three classes of Lead Nine instead of our normal two. And I mean, I took part in this. It was a great time and I was really, really actually excited to see what the future leadership program looks like. And right there is Wyatt, who is interviewing. Very good kid. So that's really all we had today. So thank you.
Awesome. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Philip.
Well, that brings us up to presentations for Student Virtual Reality Project. I'm going to turn it over to Heidi.
Okay. Well, we have fifth grade students and Mr. Dombrowski from Stadium Drive Elementary. These fifth grade students had an opportunity to integrate reading, writing, history, and technology skills. This took place in December. We had a few cancellations, a little bit of snow, so they finally get to present tonight. Students created presentations about different time periods in American history to teach others about main ideas that appeared across multiple texts. Students met in partnerships and small groups. They collaborated on information and determined the best way to organize and present their thinking. So students had the opportunity to choose both the time period to explore as well as the way that they would be presenting. Students got to choose from CoSpace virtual reality, Sway, PowerPoint, and handmade books. The opportunity for choice, which we love, truly heightened student engagement and motivation. And so they are here to share their project with us tonight, as well as Mrs. Fornwell. So welcome. Thank you.
I think you stole all of our thunder. That was a very well, like, detailed, like, summary. I'm Mr. Dombrowski. I'm the Technology and Library Specialist at Stadium Drive. And one of the jobs as a Technology and Library Specialist is, you know, finding new technology and figuring out ways to, you know, not only explore it, but integrate it actually into the classroom content. I'm a former fifth grade teacher with some great teammates, so it's natural fit there a lot of times with fifth grade and Mrs. Fornwell and Mrs. Doig and Mrs. Weingartz. Last summer, I came across some software that you heard about CoSpaces. And like anything technology or anything new, it kind of took a chance, dove in. And I have the experts here with me to kind of explain what they've come up with, with the different things. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Hi, my name is Kendra.
Let's bring that mic down a little bit, Dan. There you go.
Hi, my name is Kendra and this is Reese. Currently, fifth graders at Stadium Drive Elementary. As fifth grade students, we were able to integrate reading, writing, history, and technology skills in December.
We had the opportunity to take class learning and apply it to the technology learning we were doing in the media center with Mr. Dombrowski. We created presentations about different time periods in American history to teach others about main ideas that appeared across resources.
We had the opportunity to choose from time periods such as World War I, World War II, Vietnam War, Civil Rights Movement, Civil War, and Women's Suffrage. Collaboration time occurred in the classroom and media to work and learn together.
This project boosted our skills of working together, mostly interacting with our peers and others that we would have never worked with before. We had the opportunity to choose the time period to explore and the mode for presenting. We did not have to use CoSpaces. Many of us chose to because there was a way to interact online, but school-related. We chose between CoSpace's virtual reality, Sway, and PowerPoint. The opportunity for choice really heightened our engagement and motivation.
This project helped us with our skills of engagement. If we didn't do CoSpaces, the other options could have fitted us better.
Overall, this project boosted our communication and discussion skills. These are proud moments for us.
Nice job.
Hi, I'm Ava.
And I'm Harmony.
And we're here to teach you more about CoSpaces.
There are many different types of environments you can choose from, like mountains, grass lands, and deserts. Once you have your environment chosen, you can add people, animals, or props.
And props.
Once you have your characters, you can start coding. It's not difficult to code. You just drag and drop the, you just drag and drop the command you want and you can type, and you can even type in what you want your characters to say.
No, it's not.
Once you've finished your world, you can use a Merge Cube or VR goggles to view your space. Also, use your imagination to discover new and exciting, new and exciting things.
You also, you can also CoSpace with friends to create a space together. While you create your world, you can use your imagination to create something out of this world.
Word.
Hello, my name is Cole and I'm here to talk about a new addition to CoSpaces called Merge Cube. With this Merge Cube, you can do a lot of different things, like you could do in CoSpaces. Like, for example, you could add trees or water or really anything you could think of. With this Merge Cube, this is the Merge Cube, by the way. So unlike CoSpaces where you could experience it in virtual reality, with the Merge Cube, it's augmented reality. So you could take any of your mobile devices with the CoSpaces app and you could view this through the mobile device. And in the past year, we've been working on this new addition with the Merge Cube and it has been really just fantastic with these and a great addition to our classroom.
Awesome.
That's it.
Hello, I'm Isabella.
And I'm Maria.
Together, we created a CoSpace presentation on the Women's Suffrage time period.
Great time to meet March as Women's History Month.
Our CoSpace is an adventure quest where you get to meet various historical figures during this time period.
This makes it more fun to learn about different topics.
You, the board members, will have the opportunity to experience our project using the VR goggles that Ava and Harmony previously talked about. We hope you enjoyed our CoSpace presentation.
Very good.
What you do is you're going to put one of these up to your face. Okay. And you're going to press this button to move around and then to your eyes. Press the other one. Press around and.
Oh, there it goes. Where do you got that? All right, cool. How does it work, honey?
You press the button.
Yep. Push that button.
The kids created these.
Okay, the dot.
Oh, I have to put those on, right?
There's a dragon in here.
I keep wanting to move my head.
That's awesome.
You may have to turn around. You turn all around.
We created all the movement and you have to decide what is in there.
You help me out there?
That's fantastic.
Now, how does that, uh, cue work?
Somebody else has ever turned that. Pretty amazing.
If you put it up to the screen. Someone has created this environment. And like, see what you made. Like, they coded the dog to walk in circles and like, you're sitting in the bed and stuff.
That's awesome.
Now, this has nothing to do with this, all right?
Yeah.
This is automatically go off.
There should be a sign to somewhere so like.
I want you to take a picture that I remember. A couple of the board members.
This is all coded. Be those four.
I'm kind of like a dragon breed, so I have a dragon there.
Cool.
And me and my friend did this. Modus house. So when you click on.
Then it goes on the keys. It's really cool.
You guys are just spectacular.
Okay. Scott, would you look? Let's get Scott. I want to go.
Beautiful.
I want to go. Thank you.
Doesn't work with glasses. Wait, I do this one series.
What do these things, what do they just charge? Mr. Dombrowski? What do these run on? Do they charge like an iPad?
These, they're actually nuclear, there's a.
And then you could hit headphones. What do these cost?
Of all things cost, what do these cost?
You can program them, it's like.
It's actually fun to watch.
Program the dog too.
It's a whole class set, right?
Mr. Scone got the, right, got the.
Magic bread?
Yeah.
For you guys to only grade a lot.
I think we're just.
So cool. So does this, does this actually have a memory to it? Yes, it does. So you just, you put a pen drive in it and download a file?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, my God. How cool is that? What did you do here, Jay? Do you want to see this?
There used to be a.
I like that a lot.
This is the red deal.
The red deal?
Yes.
That's fitting.
It is. Thank you, you guys are great. Thank you so much. Those are awesome. We're going to come to your school and play with us, can we do that?
Yeah.
They did a great job.
We were talking about that yesterday.
That's great.
It's 20.
Thank you so much. I did get to, I got to see that too.
Thank you. Thank you. We did, yes. Thank you. Very cool. Thank you.
Well, that was very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dombrowski, Mrs. Fornwell, and all the students.
Good job.
Mr. Shawn?
Thank you.
Our high school leadership representative was talking about eighth grade interviews they did, looking for what the future of leadership for the high school looks like. I'm thinking if we look at the fifth grade representation here, the future's looking really good for our leadership. Not just from your technology standpoint, but you all were very wonderful presenters. Well done.
Great job.
Oh, appreciate it. Very nice.
Yes, and thank you very much, students, and Mr. Dombrowski and Mrs. Fornwell. And I'd also like to point out that Mr. Scone, he is our Technology Integration Specialist this year. He, along with our Science Specialist, Jamie Kimber, wrote a grant to actually get some of this equipment. So students are now starting to experiment with it. So thank you very much.
I hope they come back because that was the most fun I've ever had at a board meeting. That was really cool. They're clearly having.
Not a fun thing.
They're clearly having fun learning, so that's what's super exciting.
Well, bring us more fun things.
Something with drones.
Craig, we're going to have to bring the sand table out.
Oh, yeah. There you go.
You guys can go. You don't have to sit through this.
Awesome.
On the grown-up stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye, thank you. Have a nice night. Our audience has gone now.
So, yeah. Well, that was fun. Can the Good News top that?
I don't know. That was pretty impressive. We've had about a month of Good News, so we tried to cram it in and we'll keep it as short as possible. But one of the coolest things that our teachers have done is Ms. McCool, who works, who's a phys ed teacher at Scripps, she's very innovative and very creative. And she created this program where they go outside and they snowshoe. It's good physical activity in the snow and this is back when we had snow. And it was really an idea, the Shape America and Shape Michigan is an idea to get kids physical and to get them outside in the winter is a unique opportunity, especially, you know, it's not skiing or something, it's right outside of the school building. So that was pretty cool. Heidi was at the Maker Fair and I'm sure she'll talk more about it. But the idea of the Maker Fair, it's something, this is now the third year. Melissa Middleton, the Media Specialist at Lake Orion High School, is the one who organizes and puts it on. And on March 2nd, what they did is they had two sessions and they have all these opportunities for students in grades three through eight who come and they're able to do all these different experiments and different STEM things. And it's just an opportunity for them to, in the winter, to be inside and be able to do things all. It actually got so big, it used to be in the commons of the high school and now it got so big that now it's in the gym because there's so many. And Ms. Middleton talked about how she is going to expand it in the future if she can because there's so much interest in it. And it's really a great program. And one of the cool things about it, too, is it brings together all of our students because the high school students are the ones who run the stations and grades three elementary and middle school students are the ones who participate. So that's really great. Obviously, kindergarten information night has happened, it happened on March 6th, but we're moving forward to the registration on March 19th. So anyone who's out there and watching this, March 19th is the day to come to CIRC building and register. And this is an opportunity for all our principals to get in there and to get them in the building and give the presentation and talk about kindergarten and developmental kindergarten. So people who are interested, there's an online Power School registration to do beforehand or you can do it if you show up that day, there will be a computer available. And on March 19th is the registration day at the CIRC. So if you have any questions, our website has lakeorionsschools.org/kindergarten. And so all the information is there as well. We got another state championship. You know, it's rare for Lake Orion to have two athletic state championships in one year, but this is one of those rare years after the volleyball in the fall, which we all remember. You know, the boys' powerlifting team went to Ionia last weekend and they won the title. It was very impressive. It was a close win, but it was very impressive that they did that. And I think that it really says a lot about the program there. This is their fourth, by far, the most state championships in any sport for Lake Orion is the fourth one that they've had in the program's history. So that's really impressive. The robotics, we, I'll hear about the robotics, but this year, the robotics is off to a very good start. It's their first competition last weekend. They went down to Miami Valley in the Cincinnati area. And what they did is they won the championship, you know, they won their first competition. There are many more to come and obviously, but this one alone qualified them for the world just by winning it. So they're very impressive. Their robot, you'll see more in Inside the Dragons, which should be out in the next week. But it's a really cool robot because they found out what the, like every year, they find out what the plan is and what the game is that they have to compete in. And they kind of found a different way to do it. Instead of having a robot turn and flip, they have now the top of the robot can go back and forth. And it's really unique. So their foresight there. The DECA kids, we know about the DECA, the business program at the high school. They competed this last weekend and four of our students will advance now to Orlando later on this spring. And that's an opportunity for them to share their marketing and all the different things drawn by Julia Dale Rumple at the high school. And it's a great program. The business students, they really learn a lot from it and marketing. This is someone, I'm not, oh, this is Marion. Ms. Genopoulos, it's been a costume week this week. If you've seen the video, you can see it inside the dragons, but it's also on our, all our social media. We made sure that everyone saw it.
That's what I said.
She came into Stadium Drive and she thought she would scare the kids.
I didn't, they didn't budge.
No, they were all excited and everything. She tried to make some noises, but this is.
I walked in, I went, ah, like this, and I thought they'd get scared, but they started running.
It's symbolic, obviously, as many of the board members fortunately have gone and read in classrooms as well and participated. This March is Reading Month, Heidi, I'm sure will address it. But it's a huge deal, obviously, in every district, but especially in ours. They really, every building, especially the elementary ones, try to make it unique. And they have the guest readers, they have themes a lot of times at the middle level. You know, they just try to find different ways to do it. At Walden, there's a lot of stuff before the school day. At Scripps, they read in the middle. Sometimes they can bring their lunch in. At Oakview, they have an opportunity to, they have this bracket challenge, you know, tying in with the March Madness thing with books. And so it's really, and at the high school, you know, kids are reading as well. So it's really great and it's great how the district really embraces March reading. And Marion as well.
It was a theme though, right?
The theme was wild about reading, so.
Just deciding to dress up for the heck of it.
A random costume.
So I figured that I would be wild.
Julie gets a shot, an assist on that for finding a great costume for Marion, too. We made it to day 100 despite all the snow days. And at Weber, Ms. Golthaus is here and it was really cool that they all dressed up and they got in the theme. They had their hats and, you know, it's always a, it happens a lot of times, but it's a, day 100 is always an opportunity for teachers to really, you know, use numbers and counting and things like that. So it was cool that they celebrated at Weber. Mrs. Genopoulos, again, was participating with the students. And yesterday, she went and made a presentation and ran a station for the weather experiments at Orion Oaks with our, one of our STEM coaches, Andrew Brook. And all the students crowded around, you can see some of the pictures on our website. All the students crowded around her and she was talking about the temperature and they were reading thermometers and everything and they're learning about weather. And then right after that, Fox Two meteorologist Derek Kevra came and he showed how to make a cloud. You can see that video on our website, too. And it was the kids, you pump it up and then boom, a cloud appears in a bottle and the kids were amazed, which was really cool. Sarah G. from Walden qualified, this is her second year, winning the Geography B. And she's going on to the state to represent the district. And we wish her the best. If she wins there, then she would go on to Washington DC, so we're very proud of her. And the parent university, we've had a number of them since, I guess, the last Good News. We have probably three or four. And I think we're, we're getting towards that at Parent University, but it's been, it's an expanded program this year and there's only one. and there's only one left, it'll be later in the year, but, um, two, two left, okay. Heidi will address that, but it's been great. The attendance has been great, and it's really exciting to see parents who are engaged with, you know, learning about their children at all levels, so, thank you very much. Any questions?
No, it was excellent. You good? Jake, you got a question?
Yeah, Mark, for the kindergarten, it's not, is it, it's not just March 19th, like they, that's the first day, right? We'd like them to come in and register on March 19th. If they can't, they can make an appointment to register with Central Enrollment. Okay, it's important after that. Right.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Do you have anything for communication update?
No, I think we're good. The Inside the Ja, Inside the Dragons show is almost done for March, so it should be out in the next week, and, uh, you know, obviously, that's like our community-wide newsletter, so hopefully, you know, everyone watches it and shares it. It, it's on the TV stations, ON TV, and the Education Channel, but we also put it on our website and YouTube, so we'd like everyone to share with that. Thank you.
All right, excellent, thank you. Well, that brings us to public participation, but I don't think we had anybody sign up to participate. So, we're gonna move right into strategic areas of discussion. First up is, of course, the governance and our superintendent's update.
I'd like to start off with a disclaimer about my attire today. Um, I lost a bet with the superintendent in Oxford, Mr. Tim Throne, and the bet had to do with, uh, the basketball game between Oxford and Lake Orion. And, uh, he challenged me that in the event they won, that I would wear an Oxford shirt to a board meeting and to the next superintendent's meeting, and then I also have to take him to lunch. And it was vice versa, if we won, well, as you can see tonight, we didn't win. So, I threw away all my Oxford shirts, just so you know, I did not have a one of them.
This is not hers.
This is not mine. I borrowed this from, uh, a former, uh, board member in Oxford, but I have to tell you, the one, he brought one over, Mr. Throne, for me to wear, and it was like the one Scott has on, some bulky old sweatshirt.
Hey!
Not yours.
People love this shirt!
I said his one, with gray tops, Oxford hoops, and he had his name on the back. So I said, "There's no way I'm wearing that." So that's why I got this delicate little shirt here. So that's my disclaimer for anyone who is watching. I surrounded myself with my wonderful friends, board members, and audience, and asked them all to wear Lake Orion gear, so hopefully that drowned out my Oxford shirt.
Good-looking crowd in here.
Yes, for sure. Um, so, um, the other thing is that, that, um, I participated as a scientist. I have to tell you, our STEM program and our STEM coaches, science coaches, are spectacular, and if you have the opportunity to view one of these lessons, um, I strongly encourage you to do that. Maybe at one of our board meetings in the future, we'll bring some of the kids in to demonstrate. Couple of things about that, Chris Barnett, on March, what's the date?
Twenty-seventh.
March 27th is doing a State of the Township, and I think we're all invited to that. It's in the morning, and it's at Woodside Church, and it's at 8:30 in the morning. And, um, he, I am going to be a part of that, um, the State of the District. So what I did was, we taped my segment as a science coach, so that was good. So that's what we did there. One other thing I just wanted to share with you, our kids are terrific, as you saw at the fifth grade. At the high school, I got a note from a student who had created a petition, and his petition was that they wanted to have Dragon Stomp reinstated at the high school on a regular basis. Do you know what Dragon Stomp is?
Negative.
Oh, if they don't. It's a menu item?
Oh.
Now Jake.
Now, when you say that, yeah, I don't know what it is, but I'm...
It's in the lunchroom, and it is a menu item that has mashed potatoes, chicken pieces, corn, and gravy, and the kids all love it. Well, evidently, um, I, I wish I'd brought my note from him, what the petition said, because he felt that, you know, we were, uh, depriving them of the pursuit of happiness, because when they went Thursday to get their Dragon Stomp, instead, there was this menu item called Hot Sandwich or Hot Beef Sandwich or something. So anyway, so this, this student created this petition and sent it to me, it was so respectful, so well-done. So, I went to Marla, and I, our food service director, and I said to her, "Marla, is there a reason we're discontinuing this?" And she said, "No, I'll check into it." Well, as it turns out, we have reinstated Dragon Stomp every Thursday. And the main reason is the method that the kids used in such a respectful way to really, you know, ask for something, it wasn't outrageous, or...
Right, it's reasonable.
So, they are now thrilled that they're gonna have their little Dragon Stomp.
So are you bringing back the Estada, too?
What is that?
Oh!
That's a term, that's a term for the, for the 90s crowd.
Yeah.
That was our Dragon Stomp.
Oh, okay.
It's Gordon's Mexican Pizza.
Stories like that.
Oh!
And no, it's great to hear stories.
They're, they're, they're learning that their grievances, they can petition the government to, uh...
Absolutely. Yeah, it, but, well, that's part of what teaching is all about, regardless of, even at my level, and not in the classroom, but to teach them that you can change, make change, but you have to do it in a respectful manner, you know, and it's better than them all standing outside banging on the dishes and wanting a Dragon Stomp or stomping on the dragon, whatever, so, with it, with that. We're gonna talk a little bit about strategic plan. You wanna do that? Start it off?
Um, well, we had, if you recall, we had discussion about, uh, moving forward with the strategic plan, and it was unfortunate that we were delayed in, in being able to act on it because of all those snow days, and the delay in a meeting with, the ability to meet with, um, the representatives of the Strategic Planning Committee, our company that we wanted to use. So when we finally did that, as you recall, it was making it for a tight timeline if we wanted to do it still this spring. So out of concern, you know, Marion went back and to talk to, um, it's Kay? Kay Cornell, and she got some, they had a discussion about it, and the recommendations are as follows. Um, Kay said that waiting till the fall would be fine, and a good thing even, maybe everyone in their approach would be, have a fresher approach, um, that we could convene that Y'all Come meeting in September. People could sign up to be on the Strategic Planning Committee, and between October and Thanksgiving, a Strategic Planning Committee would meet and develop a plan, and we would still be allowed, um, to identify budgeting for any other new identified initiatives.
Yep. She said that, uh, starting in the fall will be an opportunity to get people excited. She has done this in a number of districts, Rochester, Novi, and others, and found that starting in the fall as opposed to starting it now and rushing it, uh, and then people forget about it over the summer, so it really sets the tone for the year. So the, our recommendation, ours, Berg and I, because we were charged with, uh, investigating this, is that we start in the fall, so...
What do you guys think?
It's fine.
How's that line up with the dynamic that, um, Heidi, you brought up, that says it's an input to...
Good question.
Planning for the next year? Is the right time to do it, or?
Yeah, because if we started in the fall, then the planning would go and, um, until spring, and then we'd be ready for whatever implementation in the, in that following fall. So we would leave prior to the summer with our initiatives for the fall, which is right on, then on target with the teaching and learning, um, timeline.
Cool.
We don't wait, there's no time wasted in the fall, so when you leave for the summer, you know what you're doing as soon as, as soon as you come back.
Cool.
Anyone else? No?
Yes.
Head nuts? Sounds like we have support.
We're all set, and I will schedule, um, give them scheduled, actually.
Yes.
She did say they were available, and we will use both, they will be using both of them, which is good, because they're both terrific, different styles, though, so I think you'd be happy.
And she did, just to, um, I think somebody had, we had talked about...
About half-days.
About half-days. There was some concern about people being able to commit to that, and based on their experience in doing this in other districts, they don't recommend half-days for a couple of reasons. One is that the momentum is lost. They said when they did a strategic plan in South Lion, that they scheduled a day was from 1:00 to 7:00, and that allowed for people to have, if teachers or staff were involved, they could only need a half-day sub, so that, you can be flexible with the timeline with that, so...
From 8:30 to 2:30.
Right.
Also, um, the one meeting, I think, uh, the Y'all Come meeting, so that you encourage all community members to come. They did that on a Saturday, I believe.
I think you're right.
Yeah. So that would get a, a good participation. So, um, just legislatively, right now, the legislature is looking at a couple of issues. One, uh, in particular, that may affect us, has to do with snow days, and the legislature, there's a couple of legislations looking specifically at making those two days that the governor called emergency, close, uh, really closes state. We are not allowed to count those. The legislature may be moving in the direction of passing legislation that those two days do, in fact, count as forgiven days, so that would be really good.
So that would be in addition to the sixes.
Right. So, we're not informing, I know I'm getting a lot of people asking, and you may be as well, when is, how long are we gonna have to go to school in the summer? But until we get through the next few weeks, and there's a storm coming Thursday night, um, yeah. Don't look at me like that, Halloween. Sorry. Yes, there's, but at...
Josh will drop them off on his way to work.
To your house.
Yes. And to see what this legislation is, if that goes through, I think we should just not give people hope or whatever, but at this point, we know that there are six days for sure.
Sounds good.
So right now, for sure, there's six days, and there could be an additional two. So that's best case scenario.
No, there could be an additional five, because, uh, we did apply for a waiver with the Department of Education.
Oh, so it's six plus the three plus the two.
Two, nine. That would make us whole.
Except for Carpenter.
Carpenter has three additional days. We've had 11, Carpenter has 14. So if we get the six, which we have, that takes it down to five. If we get the state waiver, that's down to two. If we get the two, we're...
From the legislation, and you're, then we're good, except for...
And we'll get out a day early. Just kidding.
That's funny.
Here's a different, a different take on it, just for the, I don't know, the, the thought process on it. Why do we want to waive those extra days? I mean, that means content's not covered, right? I mean, isn't there an argument to be made to say, every day that we don't have, we're covering less learning?
Well, I, you know, I have to tell you, our teachers have been really pretty good about...
Have they caught up on...
Catching up and so forth. I haven't been in the schools, I'll turn that one over to Heidi, she would be able to...
Yeah, we've, we've made adjustments. We started making adjustments, I don't know what day, and, um, early on, yeah, when we saw that we were, you know, where it was gonna cause a problem, yeah. And this would be, I think, this is unique this year, we've not had this many days, and we've not had a governor call a state of emergency. So, um, I think this year is, is...
Didn't we change the assessment schedule as a result, too?
Yeah, yeah, we have adjusted assessment schedules, curriculum maps, yeah, so...
You hear a number like, even 11 or 14 days, I mean, that's, yeah, the opposite argument would be maybe, boy, why don't we argue to make sure we're in?
It's harder...
I know logistics get goofed up.
Yeah. It's harder when you have to add them to the end, like if there was a built-in break that we could take a few days where school wasn't getting out, that, I think, would be better, because, you know, students, they're done in June. You know, their mindset is, anyway, but...
And we go late as it is.
We do go late. So it's hard when they have to be added on the end. Now, we're looking in the future, you know, are there days that we could potentially build in down the road if this should happen again?
Like a contingency plan.
Yes, which would be better.
Excellent. All right. Anyone else? Is that all you got?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's me. Yep, that's it.
Good. All right. Does the policy committee have a report?
We do not, we do not, but Julie, do you have an update on the updates?
The status.
Yes, I spent a whole day on clearing our policies. I did find several, um, things that I marked up that are new additions, that were not folded language, appearing to be new from that gap of updates that we missed over four years. So my plan is to have Cabinet look through them first, because as we bring them to committee for first reading, they've looked at them already, so I'd like to have them review and make sure there are some, some of those pieces don't have options, so it's simply just, you know, do we approve this or not? But there are a couple that do, so I'd, I'd like their opinion on those options especially, and then I'll have to, we can do it in committee. It shouldn't take nearly as long as it did the first time you go through it.
But it's the same bundle, right?
Yes.
That one?
But we also have a new bundle.
Too late.
We also have a new bundle.
Because, yeah, now you get to spring it.
But is it, is it online now, so we don't have to kill all that paper?
It's not yet. We're, we will be, but when, uh, it's not gonna happen.
Gotcha.
Thank you for the policy committee update.
Just to be sure, was that, um, time better for you?
Yeah, that was good.
Later?
Later in the day meeting time.
Yeah. Afternoon works better for me.
Okay.
Even though you want an hour and a half over.
I don't think it was her fault.
It was totally her fault. It was actually Julie's fault.
So I, I'll send you a request for another meeting to look through those as soon as I get to them, like, now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your work, Julie. Thanks for the update. Oh, no doubt. And the Board Self-Assessment Committee has nothing new to report, so that brings us around to Student Achievement and Assistant Superintendent's Update.
Okay, one of the things in your packet this evening is the Head Start funding. Um, this is something that, um, we are required to bring to the board, and it's, it's law, so... As you will see in the document, um, that this law requires us, um, that basically, there is a 1.77% cost of living adjustment, um, to the, um, grantees that work in this program, and so this is just for year FYI and approval. So, as you know, with anything with Head Start, it all has to go through the board, but we're mandated by law to do it anyway, so...
It's good news, though, right?
Yes. And then a few other, uh, highlights, many of those, um, Mark had touched on. The Maker Fair was a great success, and again, I want to thank everybody, all the staff and students who made that successful, and for Melissa Middleton, who really spearheaded it. She's been doing that for several years, and every year, it gets bigger and better, so thank you to everyone for that. Um, also, on Tuesday of this week, all of our principals, um, had a literacy PD, so they had an opportunity to, um, observe in, we started at the high school, in a high school, uh, classroom, and then we went to Scripps to observe in a middle school classroom, and then finished at elementary. Again, just all, you know, learning about, uh, literacy, and so our coaches, our literacy coaches put that together, and it really was a fun and fabulous day, um, so that was great. And then, uh, as well, today, um, we had bond, uh, committee and design meetings all day, and so, um, we met with Early Childhood, and that group is, we reviewed all of our pictures from the tours that we've been taking of different facilities, and so we have one more tour next week. We're going to Grand Rapids to visit two, uh, Early Childhood facilities, but that committee is really working on, um, going through all the things that we like, that we have seen, and the things that we don't like, so that has been a lot of fun. Uh, the design team for Orion Oaks also met, uh, today, and really, in our meeting today, we, uh, met and looked at basically a site map and really talked about traffic flow. That was a large part of the meeting today, and so, working on some solutions to make the traffic flow a lot easier and safer there at Orion Oaks. Weber, we also looked at a site map and talked the same thing regarding their, um... Weber, we also looked at a site map and talked the same thing regarding their flow of traffic. And then we also took a tour of the building to get an idea of the potential, where the potential new wing would be going, and looking at that space. And then we ended the day, oh no, I forgot about STEM. We also met with STEM. That design team kicked off today. So their portion of the meeting was a lot of just generating ideas and opening up their minds, and they have some homework to think about some things, and then we will meet with them the next time. And the furniture committee also kicked off today, and a lot like the STEM team, their meeting was, again, Tom did a great presentation on really just some of the latest research in education and classroom environment, and how the furnishings in that environment really impact student learning. So, great day, very full day, but all of these design teams and committees are really working very well. It's, it's been a lot of fun, so...
That's cool. Thank you for that, Heidi. Thanks for organizing all that, and it's a big day for you. Curriculum committee report?
There's nothing to report at this time, but we will be meeting next Friday.
Yes, we will.
Not this Friday, Julie tried to convince us.
Next Friday, okay. Lamp of Learning Committee?
There is no report at this time.
No report at this time. So that brings us to Human Resources Assistant Superintendent Update, Rick?
Yeah, just want to update you on, actually, our meeting that was held today, our healthcare committee meeting, where we have representatives from each of the different bargaining groups, as well as our at-will employees and administrators and so forth, and the goal of that committee is to really look at our healthcare coverage for the district and try to find a, an affordable plan that has quality coverage, of course, and as most of you know, we did make a switch a couple of years back to a new vendor to work with. Part of the reason for that switch was, previous vendor, we were not able to get what we call our experience data from. So, in other words, our utilization, what areas are we using healthcare, are there areas that we can focus on to reduce some of the costs and so forth? So today, our consultants went through our, our two years of collected data, and it was very interesting to see, and it helps direct us. We did renew, this time, a year ago, with our current carrier for an eighteen-month renewal, which was kind of nice, because we got to fix costs for eighteen months. So we're ramping up for going to bid here in the early fall next year for renewal in January, but I'm very thankful for that committee. Mr. Faber and his folks are a big part of that, and a lot of great dialogue, a lot of discussion. The thing with healthcare is, it, we're really trying to help our folks be good consumers of healthcare, because there is a cost associated with it. And they have some skin in the game now, so that's really important to them as well. So, it was very, very productive today. I was pleased with it, and we'll, we'll keep you posted as we move forward in that area.
Superintendent Evaluation Committee report? Superintendent Evaluation Committee met last week, and we worked on a superintendent's contract, and some more of the process involved around evaluation and the superintendent And that brings us on to finance and also operations. We're now combining them into one section.
Good evening. As of last week, budget season officially got kicked off with the governor's budget proposal. I've been really communicating with different points across the state, and doing the math and trying to track down what the proposal means relative to us. It is the first start, the Senate and the House will be coming out with their versions. It's, the governor's proposal's slowly moving the finance funding model towards a more equitable and more weighted model, so this is the first run in it, so it's a new territory for a lot of people trying to determine what, you know, what the proposal really means for your own district. So that's the kickoff, and then the next few weeks to a month or so, the other legislative branches will be weighing in, and really, that's about all they got tonight.
Wow.
That was in a nutshell.
I was going to throw that in, but no.
Big note, John, is that in a nutshell?
I'm going to save that for, for next time.
Do you have any kind of guess?
No weeds.
Well, it's presented in a manner that they try to propose, they're trying to present it on a per pupil basis, but the base funding proposal is a hundred and twenty dollars per student increase, and then it's broken into funding increases tied to special ed, voc ed, and our at-risk kits. And they're trying to present it, so it's, it's a matter of, these pieces are done in the aggregate, so it's a dollar amount tied on a per pupil, which is what we're normally used to, but it's really calculated on the specific populations. So, the proposal's out there, what it really is for us, I really don't want to say publicly, because I'm really not quite sure how the math is working from the presentation. If they get through a few more iterations with the other, with the legislature, it'll be more clear as to what's really going to be proposed. There was a lot of consolidations, things, some things rolled up, some things expanded, the mixtures rate was increased by 1.3%, which is huge. But they're also giving us more money, so it's only semi-hu, so, I mean, it's a lot, a lot mixed in, and by the time we get to the end of it, it'll be a whole lot different. So I don't want to say something now, and then turn around and...
So when I say, do you have a guess, the answer would have been, no.
In a nutshell, yeah, no.
In a nutshell.
Thanks, John. I understand.
Awesome. He feels better, don't look, he's smiling now.
Absolutely, he got to talk.
I think he got set up.
So, do we have a finance committee report?
The finance committee has not met.
All right, thank you, Jake. And how about a facilities liaison report?
There is no report.
No report.
But we have, we do have a, an email chain going right now to try to get, get some time together.
Okay. And do we have a bond committee, a board bond committee report yet?
We have not met.
Is there, are there plans to meet? No? No? There's nothing?
We're waiting till the...
There's no plan yet, they need more establishment.
Yes.
It'd be likely May, June timeframe?
Okay.
To when the design committees are going to present to us, right?
When there's something, okay. Well, that brings us all the way to action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the following consent agenda items. Approved payment of the February bills in the amount of $7,751,513.87. Approved minutes from February 27, 2019 workshop meeting and closed session in the Head Start coordinators' report.
Thank you, Scott. Is there support?
I support.
Thank you, Dana. Any discussion? Those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion to approve the consent agenda passes. May I have a motion to approve the Head Start and Early Head Start cost of living increase?
I move to approve a 1.77% cost of living adjustment increase for all Head Start and Early Head Start programs from January 1st through December 31st, 2019, as presented.
Thank you, Jake. Is there support?
I support that.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion? Those in favor of approving the Head Start and Early Head Start cost of living increase, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion to approve the Head Start and Early Head Start cost of living increase passes. May I have a motion to approve a shared service contract employee termination?
I move to approve the termination of a shared service contract employee effective immediately as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion? Those in favor of approving a shared service contract employee termination, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion to approve a shared service contract employee termination passes. Well, that brings us to the end of the meeting. Do you have anything you want to recap?
Just for recap and next steps to contact the two women regarding the strategic plan, that's it.
Okay. John, any closing comments?
I just want to thank the students and staff from the reality presentation there, that, that was great.
That was great. Rick?
Same thing, thank you. That was, that was enjoyable. I'm giggling here, sorry. Mr. Snyder's not being very nice.
Oh my God. Heidi, how about you?
And the same, and we'll be bringing you more of those presentations, yes. We have, we have quite a bit that we could bring you.
Well, we look forward to that, thank you. Dana, any closing comments?
No, I'm excited to see more presentations. It's an exciting month to be a board member, because I love going to all the, at least I think I'm going to hit all the elementary schools this time, so I'm excited about that. And all the designs for all the bond, I'm on the design committee for the early childhood, but I know everyone's meeting, and it's a super exciting time to be in Lake Orion schools.
Yay. Jake?
Nothing further.
Eight?
Love the dragon gear, I think we should have this as our new standard attire.
I agree.
My second.
It's just fun, isn't it? Don't be cozy for sure.
At least, at least on occasion, right? Steve?
I just want to thank all my friends for your patience, understanding, and support. Thank you, everybody.
It's good to have you back.
Thank you, man.
What about you, Scott?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
And you're rumpled on this red shirt.
I did not say yes, what? I'm sorry, Scott, what I said?
I'm going to go hang out in the alley.
Going to go finish your yard work?
What about closing comments, Mary?
Well, I apologize humbly to Mr. Taylor, that was not meant that yours was...
I didn't say anything.
His, yeah, you know what?
Right, they're poking the bear over there.
Baby troublemaker, I'm sorry. So, I, I just want to reiterate the thanks to the students and to the staff that gets them to that point, where they can come and present and be so articulate, is just what it's all about.
Fifth graders, that was awesome.
That was really good, so, thank you.
It was awesome, so, many thanks to everybody that was involved in that presentation. Thank you for those who are still sitting in the audience, for being here with us in your dragon gear. The bet you lost was actually for districts, so it was a significant basketball game, right? So our team, even though we lost, they had a great season, so go Dragons.
It was an awesome game.
And have a great month, March is reading month, everyone. This meeting's adjourned.
And really, Colleen?